Recording in progress.
The time is 7:00 PM. This is a special closed session meeting for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. Next is ex parte communications. Do any members have ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to make comment on closed session items? Please come to the podium. You have two minutes.
Okay, watching which council members are not violating, only Sue Deep Carr and Courtney Welsh are violating the code of ethics. They're not actively listening as they're required to do. So says city attorney John Kennedy, says it's required to do active. It's in the staff report that is required, you're required to do it, and Courtney Welsh can't, and Ms. Carr can't bring themselves to doing it, so they like violating the code of ethics, and so they should be held to account. I'm changing the subject now. Notice, there's no tables here for journalists. Other cities, at their city council, they do provide tables for journalists, so journalists can set their laptops down and do their reporting and report out, so that, you know, for information dissemination from City Hall and for like different meetings that are in public meetings in the council chambers. Oakland has tables for journalists, Berkeley's got them, Walnut Creek's got them, everybody's got them, but not here. I've been asking for a table, at least one table, for have at least one or two journalists to be able to work, and I've been asking for over a decade and it's no. And I think the reason is because there's open hostility against journalism and journalists here in this town, and that's been well documented. Two of the people in this, on this council will not do press conferences, not return phone calls, emails, texts to journalists. They don't want to be held to account, but, and so that's why, I presume why they don't, they're not, they won't talk to journalists. But, so that kind of cultural, I would call it a cultural, anti-democratic cultural, whatever you want to call it, it manifests itself in a lot of ways, and one of the ways it manifests itself is no welcoming of journalists. You make it as hard as possible on journalists to account and to record the proceedings here.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have closed session items, and we'll be taking item 5.1 inclusive of 5.1.1 through 5.1.3 in closed session.
Recording stopped.
The time is 7:07, and we've returned from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Thank you. The time is 7:07. This meeting is adjourned. The time is still 7:07. This is the-
Mayor Mora, I'm sorry, we cannot start the successor agency until 7:15. That is the agendized time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The time is 7:15. This is the regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville redevelopment agency. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. Next, we have the approval of the final agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is ex parte communications. Members, do we have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none. This is now the time for public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to make public comment? Please come to the podium. You have two minutes. The successor agency.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, I'm speaking now because I want the council to hear what I'm saying, and I want my council members to actively listen to me, and I'm, because I'm a speaker. There is, Councilmember Carr is doing it. I thank you and I appreciate you, Councilmember Carr. The mayor is doing it, I appreciate it. Councilmember Solomon is also actively listening, as is Councilmember Pryforce in his usual way. We appreciate all of you except for Councilmember Welch, so I'm going to zoom in on her. She's not listening to me right now, but she doesn't have a choice, because she signed the code of ethics, which says that council members are, must, the word is required to actively listen. And then the code identifies what, defines what active listening is, and it means your eyes meet the speaker when they, when public speakers are speaking, meaning like the public, citizens. And so it's in the, it's in the code that Councilmember Welch signed, but she can't bring herself to obey it. What happens to people here at the Emeryville City Council, council members that violate the code of ethics? What happens to them? They get censured and sanctioned. So I'm building my case against Councilmember Welch, who's violating clearly, and not my opinion, it's the opinion of the city attorney, who in the staff report, when the, when the code of ethics was voted on, said the word was required, required to actively listen. And so Councilmember Welch's obstinacy is really reprehensible, it's beyond the pale. But it's okay because justice will come, because I'm sure the rest of you will do your due diligence to protect the code of ethics and censure and sanction her like you have done to Mr. Pryforce for violating the code. So I have nothing but faith in you guys. I think you're fantastic. You're going to see to it-
Thank you for your comment.
-that the code gets assuaged.
Next is the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no action items. The time is 7:18. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:19. This is the regular meeting of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, please note that members are still seated from the previous meeting. We'll now do approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion to-
I move to approve the final agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Special orders of the day. We have a proclamation of the city council of the City of Emeryville recognizing February 2025 as Black History Month. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas Black History Month, established in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson, is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements by Black Americans and all people of African descent in the United States. And whereas the City of Emeryville acknowledges the long history of forced enslavement and racism towards African Americans in the United States and the resulting generational impacts. Whereas the City of Emeryville has committed itself to racially just policies and practices that create opportunities for all people to thrive. And the United Negro Improvements Association adopted the Pan-African flag as the universal symbol of Black liberation on August 13, 1920. Whereas the red in the flag stands for the blood shed by Africans in their fight for liberation, the black in the flag stands for the people of the African race, and the green stands for fertility, productivity, and beauty of the African continent. And whereas in recognition of the significance of Black History Month, the City of Emeryville raises the Pan-African flag at City Hall for the month of February and has done so since 2022. Whereas the scientific, technological, economic, political, and cultural innovations by Black Americans and African Americans have been essential to the progress of our nation, and we will continue to honor these accomplishments every month and every day in the City of Emeryville. Now, therefore it be, resolved by the city council of the City of Emeryville, that the month of February 2025 is proclaimed Black History Month in the city. As proclaimed by the mayor of the city council of the City of Emeryville at the regular meeting held Tuesday, February 4, 2025. I'd like to ask if any members would like to make any comments on Black History Month.
I will.
Member Welch?
I just, of course, this is very personally relevant to me being a Black woman here on the city council, and here in the City of Emeryville. Just always noting, as I did last year and previous years, that Black history is American history, it's very much a part of the history of California, very much a part of the history here in the City of Emeryville. We have such a rich Black history here with leaders, artists, activists, just different community members, and it's not so much it's even a part of our past, it's a part of our present and our future. Even now, having Ms. Bello join us as the first Black woman to serve as our city manager, I feel like it's more critical now than ever as we have an administration that is actively trying to erase the contributions of Black Americans and other people of color. That this is a time for us to just reaffirm our commitment to equity, inclusion, diversity, and celebrating all of our community members across racial and ethnic backgrounds. So I'm very hopeful of us here celebrating, continuing to celebrate Black History Month and recognize it as a city.
Thank you, Member Welch. Any other comments? Member Pryforce?
So I'm not sure, when was the last time we've updated this language? It almost sounds like a copy and paste from last year, and I would be open to an updated resolution that includes some language that just comes across as a bit dated in terms of where we are as a, as a people. I, it's not lost on several people who reached out to me when they received the censor and sanction letter, that the names that popped up in that sanction, censor and sanction letter were three Black residents of Emeryville. And so thus, I, as I spoke to last year about pleasantries, and that, that we, we show how, we show, we show love through policies. And if our policies aren't actually helpful and supportive and actually lift the life outcomes of, of what Black History Month represents, then, then we're just following a trend of white supremacy that says one thing and does another. And, you know, Julianne Bond, you know, he borrowed from Kissinger the line about that there are no permanent friends, and you know, but there are permanent interests. Malcolm X actually says permanent agendas. And, and that's really important because it stresses how- because it stresses how whatever is happening in the national office, in the White House, in the federal government, for Black people not to be distracted by red and blue, Republican and Democrat, Trump and whoever is against Trump, it, it's what's happening now, what's happening locally, what's happening every day that affects our lives. And, and I think that that is why I would suggest that we update our language so that next year it doesn't feel like more of a copy and paste.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. Any other remarks? I'll move to item five, announcement of commission committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any report tonight.
Thank you. Next is the city manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening.
Apologies, actually. We have councilmember special announcements and reports on meeting attendance first. Are there any reports from councilmembers? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and members of the public. I would like to report out, we had a very exciting award that the City of Emeryville was provided on January the 25th, and I think we're going to have a picture of it. The City of Emeryville was honored at the Assembly District 18 Awards launching under the leadership of Assemblymember Mia Banta. We, the city, was recognized in the Arts and Festival of the Year category for our outstanding 2024 Harvest Festival. And so it was a pleasure to celebrate this achievement alongside former Congresswoman Barbara Lee, Vice Mayor Carr, our Community Services Director, Rebecca, and her dedicated team, whose hard work made the festival such a success. So I just wanted to share this with the public and to thank everyone who contributed to this incredible event. Your creativity and commitment continue to make Emeryville a vibrant and thriving community. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great achievement. Next is ex parte communications. Members, do we have any ex parte communications on the consent items? Seeing and hearing none. This is now the time for public comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Any members of the public wishing to make comment, please come to the podium.
Get ready, a bomb's going to drop, figuratively. Going to, a figurative bomb, not an actual bomb. A figurative bomb is going to drop. This Tattler, a Tattler story just came out, Emeryville Tattler, just posted three minutes ago. And here's the, I'll read the headlines and a little bit of the story. Mayor Mora, Mora violates FPPC rules and Emeryville Code of Ethics. Mayor Mora violates SBC filing rules. City Council majority recently censured and sanctioned their colleague, Klima Pryforce, for the same violation. Planning Commission Chair also violated the FPPC rules. Breaking news, and it's very breaking. It's happening right now. Emeryville's mayor, David Mora, has not filed required FPPC political disclosure forms, a violation of state law the Tattler has learned. The FPPC, Fair Political Practices Commission, a state agency tasked with ensuring government transparency, acknowledged in a January 24th letter to the Tattler that Emeryville's mayor is under investigation for failure to disclose as required by law. Mr. Mora is very late in his filings, as it turns out, having not filed required campaign disclosure forms since his election victory in 2020. The FPPC investigation comes as a result of a Tattler complaint. So I generated it because I found out he hadn't filed. And then I talked to an attorney, and then I looked at state law and found out, yes, he is required to file, and he hasn't done it, just like Councilmember Pryforce, who was censured and sanctioned by Mr. Mora. Mr. Mora waved, wagged his finger at Councilmember Mora, Councilmember Pryforce with like, with sanctimony. You violated the FPPC sanctions, FPPC filings, and now we're going to censure and sanction you, Mr. Pryforce, and now, now you've done it. Okay. Again, I'll, like I said just a few minutes ago, I trust this council will do the right thing.
Thank you for your comment.
There needs to be censures and sanctions.
Next is the consent agenda.
I move to, I move the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Actually, I'd like to pull an item out of the consent agenda.
Which item?
10.6.
This is the resolution of the City Council of Emeryville approving expenditure of $218,000 for the Emeryville Center for Community Life. Okay, so we can move 10.6 as a, and discuss that separately. Do we have a modified motion excluding 10.6?
I will make the modified motion to exclude 10.6 from the consent calendar and move the rest of the items.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 10.6, do we have a member of the staff to discuss this item?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Rebecca Sermano. I'm the Community Services Director. And is there specific questions you can ask? And I also would like to point out that we do have Sean Gable.
I've given him permission to talk.
Okay, thank you.
He can answer any questions that you need.
Right, perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Aye, thank you. Member Pryforce, go ahead.
Cool, thank you. So, yeah, I'm supportive of, of this resolution, but I, I pulled it out to make a specific comment and to ask actually a question around the, the pool sort of maintenance. So one is that when it comes to the security gate control upgrades, thank you for making that happen. It was, I do have to acknowledge the Emeryville Tattler for doing a story about that. I've had issues with the, with the fact that it, we needed a little something there. And so, so I appreciate you and your team for acknowledging that and making that happen. And, you know, of course, with the council's approval. The other is the, the pool. So there has been, because I've been looking up a lot of stories, including the Emeryville Tattler and Evil Eye around the pool. It's an old pool. And, and it was a part of the whole redux of ECCL, the launch of ECCL. And, but there was also a lot of controversy around the, the cost that it took to, to redo the pool, which I believe it was Jack Asher who, who, who also was uncomfortable that it went from about a million to about $2 million in terms of cost. And Pedro, I think you, you're around then. And so, so this isn't that, right?
No, no.
And so, yeah. And I was wondering if you could just like give at least an update to folks around like bidding, you know, how, how, how the process has changed so that there is this, and, and also the lifespan of the eight years. I received an email from the Emeryville Tattler that eight years, that the, the time that, that it's, it's supposed to last a certain amount of time, the, this work. And that, and so, and that this work happening after eight years seems a bit premature based upon the 10 to 15 years, I believe, that it should have lasted. And so, but, you know, things change, environments, you know, something could happen. And so, yeah, so I just would like if you could sort of just speak to that and so that clears the air.
Happy to. So the industry standard ranges anywhere from, honestly, from seven to 15 years. The wear and tear of a pool is how much we use it too. And really what we're doing with this project is replacing the plaster. And we've actually reduced the costs greatly because we are keeping certain elements that does not need to be removed in order to save money. Plaster, we open at 5 o'clock in the morning and we close at 9 o'clock at night. And that is pretty much almost 365 days a year minus our, our federal holidays. So the pool is being greatly used more often than normal. Some, a lot of pools who do last up to 15 years, they're seasonal pools. There are pools that close during the winter. We still, raining today, people in the pool and swimming. So plaster is a common wear and tear maintenance that we have to do through every 10 years or so. We started seeing some little holes in the plaster. We've been Band-Aid repairing them. And now it's time because, before it becomes a problem, because if the plaster doesn't get replaced, there could be severe damage to the shell that could make it float, that could be a bigger cost to us keeping the pool open. So I hope that answers your question.
Please recognize.
Member Pryforce?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for clarifying that. Pools, pools in America are very political. They are, they are rife with the history of redlining and segregation. There's actually a term in economics related to what they call, I believe it's called drying the pool. So essentially what happens is that when there was desegregation, many communities said, no, I don't want to be in a public pool with those folk. And so thus, just, just dry out the pool, kill the pool. And that's what they would do. And so there's pools all across the country that were built with, with government funding and support during the time when there was mass suburbanization, that a lot of pools were just taken out of the picture because of that. And so that, and that term is really important because it shows how we in government will focus on killing something public in order to support something private, which is exactly what happened. Because of course, there was an increase in private pools. Our pool is, is celebrated and loved by many in and out of Emeryville. And what you all have done, and I think that this is something that's really important, is that, as I shared, that pools are political, that anybody of any hue, background, language, because these are all the people who have approached me about this, body size and shape, experience, knowing how to swim or not, that I actually do not know how to swim. I'm very urban, from, from Brooklyn. I don't know how to swim. But I, but one day soon, I actually will learn how to swim, and it will be this pool. And it's because of how you all have maintained it, have, have dedicated, your staff, everyone says how nice your staff is. And I've said it at a, at a, at a community services meeting, but I just want to share that with everyone. And so our pool is awesome. And shameless plug for the rest of our services at ECCL, everyone. We have other services and other recreational activities that you can participate in. And so I encourage you all to check out our pool, but also check out everything else, including our services at our senior center. Shameless plug. So I just want to say thank you for all you all do. And yeah, you all are really amazing.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any more clarifying questions?
Motion to approve the item.
Do we have, do we take a public comment? Yeah, so this is the time, this is the time for public comment. If you'd like to comment on item 10.6, please come to the podium. You have two minutes.
We get to comment because there was council opining and we're taking out, and so we get to, I get to say my piece about what Councilmember Pryforce just said, or anything I want to discuss. So just so everybody knows, the, the pool, the pool plastering, that's the interface between the water and the, and the concrete. That industry standard is 10 to 15 years. And the staff report, it says seven to 10, which is, the staff went to find on the internet, the, the lowest number of years possible to make everybody feel not so bad about having paid $2 million for this pool remodel eight years ago and now having to do a huge maintenance program. It's, so it's feel good for the cameras. We should have gotten 15 years out of this, not eight years, because we paid top dollar back in 2015 for this, for this pool. And so I, I don't want anyone that to be lost on anybody here. We got taken. And I'm hoping we're not going to get taken again. I want you guys to very closely follow these subcontractors and these contractors doing work that we pay for. I expect a normal amount of time to elapse before we need to do this big maintenance job. And seven, eight years is not a normal amount of time. That's below the lowest amount. And it's true that she did, you know, find a website that showed it could go as low as seven. But that's like fishing for an answer that, that will make the, will make the, the issue not seem so terrible. But I don't want my government doing that. I want, I want the facts and the truth to be in this chamber and discussed actively. And, and I want our taxpayer money to be watched over assiduously. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Members, any other comment or discussion, or would anybody like to make a motion?
There's a motion made already in a second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no public hearings or action items. Department head reports.
Or report this evening. Thank you.
Any future agenda item requests from councilmembers? Member Pryforce?
So for two years, as Chair, the Community Services Committee, I have been working with Rebecca Sermano and our amazing team over there around bringing a Promise Initiative to Emeryville. And so that's two years of a lot of work, and it included interviews and including by even attending a conference. And I'd like to have a, a report from the committee to this body on the, on, on whether that's something that we should take on. And, yeah, so, and, yeah.
Is this an item that could be discussed at the Community Services Committee?
Yes, yeah, you can push it to the Community Services Committee and, yes.
Okay, is there support for sending this item to the Community Services Committee? With a show of hands.
I, I just don't know exactly what this item is, but I would support it, but I am not quite clear on what this item is.
It's to discuss it at the Community Services Committee. I, I'm not sure. I don't think we can get into substantive discussion, so it'll be discussed.
Yeah, I'm fine to send it over to Community Services Committee for further discussion if that's what's needed.
Okay, there's majority support for that. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce?
Just to, for clarification, it's the Promise Initiative, which actually Mia Banta was very involved in, in that. And so Promise Initiative brings in a lot of money and support academically, scholarships, that sort of stuff, to, to communities, so.
Absolutely, I would support.
Yeah, so I just wanted, for clarification, not, not discussion. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my future gen item would be the, bringing the pleasure of allegiance back to this body. And especially given what's, what's happening nationally, I think it's really important that we, that we recognize how fragile our democracy is and, and everything that we've built, especially during Black History Month. especially during Black History Month, can be dismantled just as quickly. And so I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Members, with a show of hands, is there support for adding the Pledge of Allegiance to a future agenda? There's not support, the item fails. Are there any future, other future agenda items? Seeing none. The time is 7:46. This meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.